Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by the amazing Colin and Julie from our team. Hey, guys.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
We're excited to have you here today on our, is it the last one? Yes, the last weekly work session of 2023. Can you believe how fast this year went by? Oh, like the past three years have just been like, what, what happened? We're so excited to have you here today. And what we're going to talk about today, I think will help you feel a little bit more grounded going into the new year with a new plan. If you're watching this in the future, and it is not, you know, right at the end of a year. This is something you could actually watch any time of year to help you get a handle on what it looks like to put yourself out there. When you think about all of the things that you maybe ought to be doing as a brand partner that aren't just sharing and taking care of your people, it can feel a little bit overwhelming. But if we kind of take a step back, zoom out, and really look at how all of this stuff fits together, it starts to be very logical. It can even feel fun. But if you don't have fun with creating content, it's not something that you love, know that we've got a really cool tool that is a shortcut that you can use that we'll talk about a little bit today as well. So go ahead and head into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're always excited to see you. At least your names and your words here. And of course, we love to see you guys over in our Facebook community. So if you're there, hello, come join us. Get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. You could be on a live call just like this one. So we are going to get into slides here. Let us know where in the world you are, by the way. Before I do that, I see we've got Charlotte, we've got Arizona, Minnesota. Greg is not here this week. He's got family snowed in with him there in Fargo. So I'm sure you guys up that way have got a lot of snow. I am outside of, if you guys tune in weekly, I'm clearly not at home in New York. It was like sixty-five degrees on Christmas Day when I was with, with family. I'm in Atlanta now and will be home tomorrow. So we are so excited to be here with you guys today. Welcome. Got folks from all over tuning in. Awesome. So yeah, we're going to pop out of video and into some slides I've prepared for you guys again. As promised today, we're going to talk about your content strategy for 2024. So today, that's our topic. We're talking about how we put ourselves out there with content. All right. So we're going to talk about how, and specifically content that generates leads. So if you're looking for, you know, content strategy for educating your people, there are plenty of other trainings, and even more importantly, there are amazing providers for this platform. You can find them on our partners page. If you are looking for content to help educate and serve your existing customers. Today, we're talking about how we attract customers with content. So let's get into our lead generating content planning strategy for young living brand partners. So today, we're going to talk about what content is, what kind of content actually works for brand partners to attract leads. We'll talk about content strategy for your brand. And of course, as always, we'll have life help and Q and A. We did have someone sign up for a live spot today. So if you came here looking for help and support, you have two of the most qualified people on the planet to support you with whatever your questions might be, who are waiting for you in the chat. Colin and Julie are here. Go and add your questions to the Q and A if you came with them, even if it has nothing to do with today's topic of discussion. And if you are watching this as a recording or as a broadcast in our Facebook group, you can go to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession to join an upcoming live session. And if you'd like help on a call like this one in the future, you can go to get oiling.com/websitereview. We dedicate the latter half of these calls to working with you guys hands-on on most of the calls. So if you want to have some help hands-on, be walked through something, get a review of what you've been working on, it's a great opportunity to take advantage of. It's free to you as a Get Oil and Community member. And we can get a lot done on a call like this one. But if you'd like a little bit more help than that, if you'd like for somebody to do some of this stuff for you, we've got an incredible team that does that as well. Head over to get oiling.com/conceierge to learn more about our talented team and how they can help you. All right. So maybe just a quick show of hands. Do you create content? Is that something that you are currently doing? Are you a content creator? And let me know in the chat, what does that look like for you? What kind of content are you creating? Let us know. Excited to see what that looks like for you. Everybody has a different preference, and there is no one right, correct cookie cutter way to approach this, generally speaking. There is a formula that we should all follow that works best, and we'll talk about what that looks like today. But of course, what we like to talk about and our favorite means of delivery can vary. So tell us what that is. Let us know in the chat. All right. So let's get into what content is. If you're unfamiliar with content. And first, let me go ahead and place a caveat here. If you are at all familiar with marketing and specifically with digital marketing, you're going to notice that this is slightly different what I'm sharing with you, because what I am really doing here is tailoring what all of this stuff is for someone who is a brand partner. I want you to only know what you need to know as a brand partner to get this stuff done. So let's get into it. Content 101 for a brand partner. First, content is information. So these are words. Also, images or infographics or videos or even podcasts that you publish for public consumption. All right. So that's content, something that is created by you that is meant to be shared to inform, to engage, to educate, right, to inspire, and in some cases, to even promote. Okay, this can be placed on your website, on social media accounts. This can be released via podcast platforms, blog posts on your site or on other sites. And of course, there are many more ways that you can put content out there. This would even carry over into in-person things like keynotes or workshops that you hold that aren't expressly promotional, right? So what content is, is a path for you to be found by future customers. Now, what that means is, is that we are, I think, ninety-nine point nine, if not a hundred percent of us, especially if you're here today, we are consumers of content, right? If you have the ability to log on to the internet and you use it once a day or more, you are a consumer of content. And that content that you consume is typically based around things that you're interested in, things that you need to know, want to know, right? And so what you are doing as a content creator is you are creating a breadcrumb trail for your future customers to find you, right? So content provides the means by which content consumers can find the people that they do business with or the brands that they do business with. And the way that that happens is you've got search engines, so Google Bing, you know, insert your favorite search engine here, and algorithms on platforms like YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, et cetera. All of the social media platforms have algorithms. The algorithms and the search engines are the means by which those people find your content, right? They're searching for a recipe or they are flipping through their feed. And of course, the algorithms and the search engines provide tailored responses for those people so that they can find what they're looking for. And ultimately, we want them to find us if they're our ideal person. All right. Is that making sense so far? So let's talk about content that actually works for young living brand partners. And before we get too far into this, I want to make sure that we're all super clear here on on this, the selection of words, right? A few years back, Young Living started to make a distinction and actually created a new distinction rather for, for folks who share and profit off of the sharing of Young Living products, right? It used to be that you were a representative of Young Living, right? But what they have decided to designate for folks that they work with in that way, such as you, right? Everyone who's here on this call is to call you brand partners. Now, what a brand partnership is, both with Young Living and anywhere else in the world, is a partnership between two brands, right? That means that you have a brand and people who like you and people who listen to you, people who, who take your recommendations, and you are partnered with Young Living, the brand, right? So that when you expose your audience to product from Young Living, Young Living rewards you. So it's important that if you aren't doing this yet, you need to start thinking about yourself as a brand. You are a brand that is partnered with Young Living. And Young Living pays you for access to your audience essentially, right? When you successfully share and recommend products that people buy. Making sense? Okay, so we are brands, you yourself personally, even if you just got started or just thinking about sharing and you haven't gotten a customer yet, you are a brand. You have a personal brand, right? You don't need to go and come up with a company name. You yourself are a brand. And the people who listen to you, like you, want to work with you, that's your following. And that is what Young Living pays you for access to ultimately. All right. So let's talk about content for brand partners. Knowing the difference is the first most critical thing we need to do. And that's the difference between two primary types of content. The first type of content most of us are quite familiar with. This might be the only type of content you are currently engaged in creating, which is fine. That's where most of us start. But once you really start to get serious about building a brand that allows you to really increase your ability to grow with Young Living, you are going to move beyond just this. So social content is important. And what this is, is all content that you would put on a social media platform. And that's going to be anywhere you post, right? So that's Instagram, it's Pinterest, it's LinkedIn. You know, it's whatever your favorite social platform is where you post things, right? And what this helps your business, the way that this helps your business, what it helps you do is to drive engagement toward your brand, right? This helps more people see you and interact with you and what you create. So this is a critical thing. And then the other type of content, equally critical, long-term, really super important, is what I like to call legacy content. You could also call this long-form content. And what this is are things like blog posts, YouTube videos, meaning like longer form videos, maybe tutorials, recipes, longer sort of explanations of things, right? And then podcasts. All of these fall into what I like to call legacy content. Legacy content is something that builds authority and credibility for your brand, right? So anybody can have a social media profile and put their opinions out into the world, right? But what puts you in a different class of content creator is doing the work to post and create content that serves purpose, right? Anybody can have an opinion, but if you do the work to create something, you are now perceived not just as a peer on social media, but as a professional generally. And that's what we want. So both types of content, both social and legacy, are important to your brand partner business, all right? Now, let's talk about these in greater detail with our social media content. This, of course, is all of it. It can be informative, entertaining, engaging, promotional, drives engagement, right? And then critically for legacy content, this is going to be mostly informative. It's going to be engaging and solution oriented. So this is the difference between posting on social media to ask people what their, you know, favorite scent is in the fall versus writing an article that talks about how you can use frankincense and how it's your favorite scent in the fall, about how you use frankincense to unwind before bed. And here are a couple of studies that talk about how frankincense does this and that. No, by the way, I've got this guide on how you can get better sleep, right? That's what that's going to look like. And this is, again, it's going to build that authority and credibility for your brand. Now, let's talk about the big picture here and sort of how content works in your business. Now, what we're looking at here is a jawbreaker. I imagine these as the gigantic ones that we had as kids. They're, you know, like baseball sized. But, you know, they make them smaller too. Either way, it's the construction of this that matters. What your business looks like on the outside is what people see. And that's typically where we start our process of emulating the success that we see duplicating or trying to duplicate the success that we see of others who have done well in this business, right? So if you've got a friend who is a diamond or a royal crown diamond or so on, and Young Living, you're looking at what they're doing and assuming that what they're doing that you can see on their social media profile, for instance, is what is also going to work for your business, right? How many of us have been there? It's, you're not wrong for making that leap, right? And deciding that, hey, you know what? Success leaves clues. I'm going to do what they're doing. But if you take a step back and you look at the structure of how your business actually works and how brand psychology works, just what we're going to talk about here, then you can actually develop a strategy that works well for you, okay? And works really well to grow your brand and authority so that you can grow a fantastic base of people who can't wait for you to tell them about Young Living and how it can change their life. All right. So your business has a look on the outside, but when you break it open, it looks totally different. And nobody really knows every layer of your business except for you. But right, so this is what people see, but this is also what it looks like, okay? And so what the world sees is that exterior pretty layer, it's what we put out there. But what we're ultimately selling, right? And, and, and we're not selling Young Living products. We are selling a new set of possibilities for someone's life, for their, their health, their wealth, right? That is what we're selling. That's right in the center of this jawbreaker. And you can't see it from the outside, can you? You don't necessarily see from the outside what is being sold, what is actually moving the needle in terms of profitability. So this is what your jawbreaker looks like. And this is kind of broken down into some pretty technical terms here. I will break these down in greater detail in the next slide. But ultimately, we have at the center, your core offer, right? It's what you sell. Then we've got our client conversion layer. This is how someone moves from lead to customer in your case. We've got our lead conversion layer where someone is a a viewer of your content. Maybe they're a friend or follower on social or someone who found a post or a podcast episode or something like that. How that person becomes a lead, meaning they opt in in your Get Oiling system. Then we've got our content capture layer moving closer to the outside. This is where we capture attention. And then we've got our syndication or sharing layer. Finally, we have our exposure layer, what people see. Okay, these are the layers of your business where it comes to your growth strategy. Now, let's translate this to Young Living, okay? So first, at the core, what we are looking for, what we're looking to sell is a fully integrated lifestyle with Young Living products, right? That is the core of our business is that. The layer on top of that is how we get those customers, right? It's how we share so that we get those folks signed up who are in love with product and never want to stop ordering. The next layer on top of that is how your leads become the people that you invite to share, right? So that they can be exposed to Young Living, right? So this orange light layer on top of your core, that's when sharing happens, right? And then the layer on top of that is how people have the opportunity to be shared with. And what this ultimately is, for those of you who are familiar with the terminology here, it's your funnel. It is your funnel. Now, this can happen in a manual sense where you're having a conversation and you say, if I could show you a way, and they say, yes, that's a verbal funnel. But then you also have your, your actual technical one that you have on your good oiling website. We'll talk about that in a moment. Then the layer on top of that, that's how you capture the attention of serious leads. That's your legacy content, right? Usually someone is going to interact with your legacy content if they don't know you. They're going to interact with your legacy content before they put in their name and their email address on your website, right? You typically aren't going to put your name and email address on someone's website unless you have seen something of, of significant substance from them, right? Because you don't want just anybody sending you stuff, right? Interrupting your life and filling your inbox. You want to make sure that it's somebody who you take seriously and whose information you like and want to see more of, right? So that's our content capture layer. That's where we put our legacy content. Then we get into our syndication layer. That's how we share and promote our legacy content. And then finally, how we put ourselves and our brand out there, that is your social content. So if up until this point, all you've been doing is creating posts for your social media, all we have for a business is the posts that are on the outside of the jawbreaker and then the thing that we're selling in the center. And going back to this, this jawbreaker, if all you had was that core and then that same white layer on the, on the outside that looked like that, what would happen if you tried to pick this up or move it? It would crumble, right? It would fall apart. So it's really important that you understand that there are processes in your business and layers to what you do that help to serve the movement of people through your pipeline who ultimately become your customers. So our goal here is to construct pathways that move people easily, logically, toward the core, toward what you are offering. And from there, we can then focus on expanding exposure to those pathways, engaging in marketing that gives more exposure to our branded business and provides more people with the opportunity to move through those paths and the ones who want it, who are qualified, would of course, they would come upon the opportunity to learn about Young Living and to say yes. And those people who move themselves there are going to be the most likely to do it, right? Because they're doing it because they find what you have to say relevant to them, helpful to them, and they trust you, right? And know, like and trust is why somebody says yes to Young Living in the first place. They don't say yes to Young Living when you share it because it's Young Living. They say yes to Young Living when you share it because it's you, right? So here's what we need to execute our content strategy for the new year. First, we need a funnel to capture leads that lives on our website, okay? And then we need a plan for releasing our legacy content. That's the stuff that makes us appear credible, right? That's the stuff that, that builds our authority and of course, allows more people to see us and engage with us in a serious way. Then we'll need a plan to share or syndicate that content and engage the list that you are building of people who like to hear from you. And that's your social media post content as well as your weekly email list broadcasts, okay? Now, oops, wrong slide here. There we go. If you need a funnel, if you don't have a funnel yet, first, we want to get clear on who you want to attract to your business, right? Who is it that I want? Don't be afraid to get specific here because if you get good at building this pathway, it's easier to carve it open for more people. But if you try to attract everyone, you'll ultimately attract no one, right? So get clear on who the person is that you want to serve. It's likely going to be representative of someone you already have in your business or in your life. Then you're going to create something that helps them to solve a problem, something that you know how to fix or how to educate them on, something that matters to them a great deal. And so this is going to be in the form of a PDF, like a download, a video perhaps, maybe an audio file or even a combination of these things. And once you have that, you would set it up to deliver it to leads when they opt in on your website, right? So they put in their name and email and they get this free thing that you're offering. Now, if that's all another language to you, that's totally fine. Here we go. All right. So let's start over here. So for our legacy content strategy, you want to plan to release one piece of long-form content every week, okay? And we're going to compile a list of topics on a quarterly basis. And we're going to batch our work to develop and schedule our content. Now, if you have already watched our videos on, on, on creating, batch creating content, we definitely have those available for those of you who haven't. But this is something that is going to be an investment of your time. But it is a worthwhile one. And if you really aim to batch the work that you're doing, it can be done in a, in a very reasonable and maybe even easy and fun way. Quick tip, use your Right With AI feature and Get Oiling to save yourself loads of time on this, all right? So first thing we're going to do is compile a list of topics so that we know that every week for the next quarter, I know what my blog post or podcast or YouTube video is going to be about. Now, regardless of what form of content you choose to publish, all of it must eventually wind up on your Get Oiling blog. So if you have a blog as a strategy and that's all you want to create is blog posts, then you are great. You're going to be able to just put everything onto your Good Oil and Blog because that's where it's published. But if you are creating video on a YouTube channel, for instance, then you're going to want to make sure you embed that video on your Get Oiling blog on that post. And then, of course, link to that post in the description of that video so that you're driving traffic from both, both places and really expanding your reach there. Similar with podcasts, you can actually, depending on your podcast player, embed that podcast on a Get Oiling blog post, et cetera. So just make sure that it all winds up on your Get Oiling blog as its own post. It's going to need to be greater than a thousand words. This is ideal for your search engine authority and optimization, right? So if you don't feel like a very competent writer, then you could certainly use that Right With AI feature to assist you in expanding that content out more fully. You also want to make sure that you're using words and phrases that resonate with your ideal leads. And what this means is we are meeting them where they are. This isn't about folks who know Young Living. This is not the place to educate on what Thieves is and does, or even necessarily, you know, what Young Living is, right? This is a place to actually show people, hey, I know what you're going through. I can help you. As opposed to, hey, you said you have a headache. I have a thing, right? Which wouldn't be compliant anyway, but you get what I'm saying. We aren't creating this content to be blatantly opportunistic. What we're doing here is we're creating a space for someone to see that we are here to help them, right? So we want to keep our Young Living specific or especially promotional content to an absolute minimum. And I wouldn't really put promotional content on your blog at all because what it is supposed to be is evergreen, right? So when you create a piece of content and you put it onto your blog, always make sure that you are including a call to action and link to that landing page for your funnel, right? So you want to make sure that in your content, you're segueing from saying, here's what I'm talking about today. Here's three ways you can X, Y, Z, or here's a recipe for whatever. And, and you can say, by the way, if you like this thing or if you're dealing with that thing, I have a guide. I have a this or a that that I've created that you can have for free. Here's where you go to get it, right? Make sure that in any piece of legacy content that you create, this is included because that is that content capture layer of that jawbreaker that we looked at, right? That is where we are taking them from. I am observing what you do. I'm reading what you say. And now you're telling me that I could have this very attractive thing for free. And when they say yes to that, they're on your list. And that's going to be a great person to open up the opportunity to share Young Living work. And again, make sure that you are focusing on evergreen content with your long-term, your long-form content, your legacy content. So if you're creating a blog post, a podcast episode, a YouTube video, these are not for, we're having a sale and it's till next Friday. Because after next Friday, that piece of content is now useless to your business, right? So this is not where you put limited time promotions. This is not where you talk about holiday catalog or anything like that. This really needs to be something that is just as relevant in May as it is in November, okay? And then finally, look, I've put a lot of guidelines here for legacy content, but the most important thing that you need to know is that you need to do it. And with, with blog post content in particular, that can be edited, right? You can edit blog posts as many times as you want to, and we publish them with different content as often as you want to. You can refresh that. And of course, with video and podcasts, you know, those stay up, but you're only going to get better at them over time. You're not going to start video and be amazing at video or start podcasts and be amazing at podcasts right out of the gate. So just remember progress over perfection. There are people that need to interact with you and specifically at the stage of the journey that you're on right now. The amazing thing about the business that you are in as a brand partner is that your authenticity is going to inspire people more than your perfection. In fact, people will be less likely to want to become a brand partner with you if you're too polished. You need to be relatable. So embrace that and just get started and create one piece of long-form content on a weekly basis and just aim to get better with this over time. All right. So our syndication strategy for subscribers, this is for people who have opted in to your funnel. They've said, yes, they want to get free stuff from you. They want to hear from you on a regular basis. This is what we're talking about here. So after you've scheduled that blog post with your content, we're going to copy its link, right? And that link, we are going to put into an email. So we're going to filter our contacts for our subscribers and then write an email to them that invites them to check out your content this week. From there, we will include that link that we've copied to that scheduled post and then we'll schedule the email to go out when the post publishes. And you can actually batch perform these activities and set yourself up for an entire quarter in a weekend and have everything done and ready to go out. And now you can go about your business, taking care of your customers, posting on social, engaging with your leads, sharing Young Living, et cetera. This can be things that are ultimately going on in the background. You just want to give yourself some space to do some focused, dedicated work on this for a chunk of time, once a quarter, so that you've got these things out there in the world, okay? Now, let's talk about our social media strategy. This is something that you must do. If you are a brand partner, you need to be discovered. And I understand a lot of us have complicated or even sour relationships with some or all or many social media platforms. But as a brand, in this day and age, it is something that it is something that you need to have some degree of interaction with, right? So I want you to plan to release at least one post on all of the platforms that you're active on on a daily basis. And you don't have to be inactive, active on all the platforms. You really want to be showing up where you know your ideal people are showing up, right? So if you know that you are really working on helping people who are in high-stress C-suite jobs with incorporating better work-life balance routines, you're not going to want to hang out on Facebook. Those people have LinkedIn profiles, right? So choose wisely, pick the one that you're most comfortable with and where you know your people are hanging out and post at least once on a daily basis, in particular on the weekdays, when folks are more likely to waste their time on social media. Except that's the pastime, social media, right? People go there to scroll and waste time. And you want them to find you when they're there. You want to sit down on a monthly or quarterly basis to map out your content and absolutely use the legacy content that you have planned as a theme. So if you know that for this month, you're going to be talking about sleep routines, you're going to be talking about what you eat in a day. As, you know, as a person who has this goal, you're going to talk about an exercise routine that you can do in 15 minutes. And then you're going to talk about a grocery shopping strategy that focuses on the perimeter of the store. So you're going to have a blog post for each of those topics, right? So each week, theme them out, right? So if you're talking about, hey, on this week's blog post, I talked about how it's important to focus on where you start in the grocery store to not only maximize your budget, but your health. And you can find that on the blog. But right now, I actually want to know which direction do you walk in when you walk into the grocery store? Do you go straight for an aisle in the middle or do you head over to produce? Like, what do you do first? And that's a social post, right? So you can actually use the topic that you've chosen for that week's long-form content to guide you and make your life easier to create, you know, five or more posts that you'll be releasing each week on social media. And guys, listen, I know what it's like to know that you need to post today, not know what you want to talk about and scrolling for inspiration from other people. And then you fall into a hole and you're on social media for two hours and you've gotten nothing done, right? How many of you have been there? If you want to avoid this, make sure that you are sitting down. Again, give yourself a period of a couple hours, once a month, to decide exactly what your content plan is for social media. And use themes for daily posts as well. So maybe you've got, you know, Tip Tuesdays and, you know, Throwback Thursdays, whatever that is that you like to do. You could even theme it out to make it even simpler for you. So this week, I'm talking about sleep routines. So on Tip Tuesday, I'm going to give a tip about this. Wellness Wednesdays, I'm going to talk about this related to the sleep routine, right? So you can use those themes to really make your life easy. Now, when you, one of your posts, at least during the week, should absolutely talk about and link to your blog post that you've created that shares this week's content. And it is important, and this is really for the algorithms on social media. They want you and the people that you're interacting with to stay on their platform. So you don't want every single post that you create to be linking to your website or somewhere else. So make sure that less than half of the posts that you create on your social media shares links that go somewhere else, right? Because they want to keep everyone there, right? That's their business model. And if you help them, they'll help you, right? The algorithm will help you if you do what they want. So less than half should point somewhere else. And this is just a general rule, less than 20% needs to be promotional. And by promotional, I mean, there's a sale, here's a product, right? Things that are very explicitly, I sell Young Living, here's a Young Living product, right? Less than 20% should be like that. If you're trying to build a brand as a brand partner, meaning I have a brand, Young Living has a brand, right? Our goal is not to be brand partners, meaning we are Young Living as brand partners, but that we have a brand and we trust Young Living. Therefore, hey, you who likes my brand, you'll like this brand too, right? That's how this works. All right, and then you want to make sure if you are on these social platforms that you're using a profile, personal profile and not a business page, right? If you were a coach, I might not necessarily recommend this exactly the same, but specifically as a brand partner, you are going to be better off using a personal profile because that makes you more approachable, right? And it allows for you to network more effectively, right? Because you're putting yourself out there as a personal brand and not being super promotional in what you're doing, you can actually operate in a really dynamic way with the platform, making the most of what's available to you. And then ultimately with social media, your strategy is to invite engagement with you. Get people into your DMs, or that's the private messages on whatever platform it is. And then from there, we can get them to our website if they want to go there. But remember, all roads lead to, if you remember the layers of that jawbreaker model, at the very core is someone who becomes the Young Living customer. But just on the outside of that is how they become a Young Living customer. And how do they do that? If they really are going to become a customer that sticks around long-term, they have a conversation with you. So all of this is to help nurture them, even strangers, people who don't know you right now. Well, your absolute best customers, you know, on their timeline, right? In three weeks, in two days, in six years, whatever that looks like, they're going to become your best customer. So we're going to want to move them toward that point of conversion to customer, which could be a conversation with you. All right, now, real quick, you guys, if you are looking for a business boost in the new year, of course, again, we're sharing this on the very last weekly work session of 2023. In 2024, we're doing something new, you guys. We have reopened seats for the New Year Level Up Bootcamp. You can log into your dashboard, there's a banner there. This is going to be available for just a few more days. Our kickoff call is next Friday. So definitely check this out. There's a video in there that I created during Black Friday. It was 1:47 during Black Friday, but it is only 1:97 now. And that's for six weeks of live calls. And this is dedicated very specifically to the brand partner who wants to level up their brand partner business. I know we do a lot of stuff, especially, you know, with the Personal Branding Intensive and things like that, that are focused on kind of building out the brand. We're getting into action to grow your Young Living business in these six weeks, all right? So if you are ready to really get in gear and grow Young Living in the new year, reach your next rank, get into the actions that you need to be taking and have accountability to support you along the way. Don't miss out on this. Head over there and get started, six weeks of live coaching, all right? And that's dedicated to growing Young Living. So let's get into some life help and Q and A. We did have someone sign up for a live work review. Big apologies for the audio issues today, that normally have those, but I am in a hotel room today. So, you know, the travel gear doesn't always do what it needs to do. All right, so let's see, I think, do we have anything in the questions in the Q and A? Okay, Donna asks, I may have missed this, but is there training or a course in Get Oiling that instructs on how to create and set up a blog? I really need to do this. Yeah, so you're going to find, it's not a course. I do talk about it in at least one of our courses. But if you want to get into the actual mechanics and strategy behind setting up a blog, you're going to want to go to the Get Oiling Success Academy. And here, let me make sure that I've got the correct link pulled up here and I will show you what that looks like, okay? Okay, there we go. So, you know, and by the way, again, right here is where you're going to want to go if you want to check out the Level Up Bootcamp. There's a video in there and of course, you can get started from right there. So the Success Academy, Donna, is where you're going to want to go. And if you go to Live Training and Re Place and you type in the word blog, that will actually take you to our YouTube channel, but it will filter for content about blogging with Get Oiling. So that's what you're going to want to do. And you can find, there's actually a playlist here, but we learn about running and setting up a blog for brand partners here. There's blog branding, content branding. These are going to be both really great options for you to check out if you want to run with this strategy that I've been sharing with you here today. So let me find real quick. We did have one person sign up for a live review. Want to make sure we honor that, Renee, are you here? Can you raise your hand for me if you're here, Renee? There you are. Let's bring you out to chat. Hello, thanks for coming out.
Hello.
Hi, how can we help today?
Well, my, I've had Get Oiling account for years. And I don't know how to use it. I'm just totally, I'm not a techy person. And I have, I've got it, I think, 64% setup.
Okay.
I don't, I keep on paying for it, but I'm not using it. And I want to utilize it or not have it at all.
Understood. Yeah, so can you tell me a little bit about how you run your Young Living business like currently? Or how you did before Get Oiling?
Well, right now, I have been just posting a Facebook.
Okay, okay. And how are you communicating with your customers?
Usually through the chat.
Okay, so you're just, you're interacting directly with them. Okay, okay, great. So what is your, what would you say your biggest goal is, you know, for the next 90 days with your Young Living business?
To start using Get Oiling and start building a business.
Okay, okay. And what's your preferred way of sharing?
What do you mean?
Yeah, when you are sharing Young Living, are you having classes? Are you, are you doing workshops? Are you sitting down with people one-on-one? What does that look like?
Well, right now, I haven't been doing anything. But I have in the past done classes. I've both, I've done them virtually and I have done them in person before 2020.
Okay, got you. Okay, great. So what I would do, and let me just, I want to take a look real quick and see what plan level you are on. Do you know offhand?
Yes, it's the cheapest.
Oh, perfect, okay. Yeah, that's, if you're brand new to us and to this, that's exactly the right place to start. So what I would do is, as a matter of fact, I believe if we get into the, actually, let me see if I can log into your here we go, yes, perfect. So what I would recommend that you do, starting in the Success Academy, is to follow, I think there should be a little bit of a checklist there for you. So that's right here under Success Academy. There is your system setup progress, and that's great. But if we come right over here to account setup, there are a few options here, such as setting your signature. These are some other things that you might consider attaching to your account. Those are some ideas, common projects. This is also a great place to go. I would absolutely recommend as a next step for you, if you haven't done this already, importing your V O file. Because that is something that you, as you continue to work with us and grow your business, you're going to want to repeat this process multiple times a month, right? So depending on the size of your business, you know, once you are diamond and higher, you're probably, you may want to be updating this daily, depending on how frequently you're communicating with people.
That would be nice.
Yeah, yeah. But you don't have to worry about, you know, that level yet. Get comfortable doing this. And of course, it feels less consequential when you've got a smaller team and people who probably know you pretty well. So if you goof up with the tech, then, you know, they'll give you grace. Most folks are good and will anyway. But yeah, so import your virtual office file. And then what I would recommend that you start doing is, those will be your Young Living customers. I want you to start using your contact manager, right? And so essentially, what that means is you're going to be, you know, for instance, if you would be otherwise reaching out via the DMs, right? On a social media platform, I want you to maybe make a note for yourself, right? Reached out to so-and-so, talked about whatever. And then I want to be reminded that, you know, because I don't want to just pounce when they're like, oh, you know, I'm dealing with sleep or whatever. And you could say, well, have you tried Sleep Essence? Instead of doing that, you can, you know, remind yourself to kind of check back in and say, hey, I was thinking about what you said. Here, if you want to check this out, right? That it's the sort of psychology of not pouncing when an opportunity arises to share. So it allows you to work in that way more effectively. And then if you wanted to send out an announcement to everyone, then you've got a way to do that as well. So the trainings that I would recommend maybe checking out are going to be related to the contact manager. And if we put in contact manager, I don't, I'm not sure if the tags would show up this way. But it's going to be a lot in the way of getting started. Our YouTube channel has some really great, you know, simple getting started videos, right? Oh, here we go. We actually have a whole playlist on the contact manager. So that's what I would recommend checking out. So if you go to youtube.com/GetOiling and look at playlists, the one that's called Contact Manager is going to be a really great place for you to start. Because if you are at our seed or starter plan, what you're essentially going to be using Get Oiling for is your baseline operations. And as a brand partner, your baseline operations is your relationships and how you manage them, right? So it's choosing to, instead of just reaching out in the DMs, maybe getting into the habit with your customers of emailing so that you've got records of that in your system. Or if, you know, they don't engage outside of the DMs, getting into the habit of adding notes for yourself on that contact so that you know, because of the conversations you're having, what kind of products they're buying. So that if you see that a particular thing is on sale or back in stock, you can be really effective in going straight to them and saying, hey, here's this piece of information that's relevant to you, right? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, so since you're new to this, and again, because you're at, you know, our starter, our seed or starter level, know that there are an infinite number of potentially very sophisticated, highly complicated things you can do with Get Oiling. But you absolutely don't need to know about any of that yet, right? Just start with, yeah. You don't even need to worry about a website. You've got, you know, the built-in sharing themes, those are ready to go for you. Run your business as you have run your business. Just make sure that you're integrating the use of your contact manager so that you, again, aren't dropping the ball with people. If there's someone that you start a conversation with that you would like to eventually share with, then you can have that person, you can add them to your contact manager. And then you can give yourself, you know, reminders to follow up with them as you're engaging. You know, if that's where you want to put a note about, you know, hey, I found out that this person has two kids and their daughter has a baby on the way, you can put that in your notes, right? So that the next time you're communicating with them, you don't have to scroll all the way up in the messages to look for the last thing. You know, what was that? Who was the person that told me X, Y, Z thing? You're getting it out of your brain and into a tool so that your brain has more space to establish and keep more relationship. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that's where I would start, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and consider the Level Up Bootcamp. We are going to be focusing on, like, we're not getting into high-tech stuff there. That is, like, it really is focused on the what works to grow Young Living. So if that's something that you're interested in, that would also be a good place to go.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, yeah, thanks for being with us. Glad you came out today. All right, let me see, do we have other questions? Okay, Selva says, if I'm new to all this, where should I start? I'm really glad that you're here and I hope that you heard everything that I just said because that really is going to be my recommendation. If you're brand new to Young Living and you're brand new to just having a business and doing the work that it takes to just have a Young Living business, then having a seed or starter plan is really great. It's, you know, it's seven or 14 US dollars a month. And you've got a contact manager and ability to email and text and all these great things. And you can start out simple and logical for things that your business, as it is right now, actually needs. And then as your business needs more things, because as a business, growth does need more things, we already have them. And you don't have to worry about going to find them. And we have the training that shows you how to do it and people who can help you integrate. You also asked, will Level Up Bootcamp be helpful to you? Yes, 100%. The Level Up Bootcamp, New Year Level Up Bootcamp is very specifically about what works to grow a Young Living brand partner business. I am positive that there are going to be questions that come up that are at higher technical levels. And I will address them, of course, where folks bring them up on those. and I will address them, of course, where folks bring them up uh on those calls. But uh, the subject matter of really what we're going to be working on and the accountability that we're keeping with each other uh inside of that six-week period really is about uh sharing. Uh, it's about following up. It's about getting people started right. And it's about how you keep yourself organized. So we will be talking, you know, where we get into tech, it's going to be more focused on uh the contact manager and how we're using it, just to make sure that you're really confident in that. All right. Uh, also really want to start doing a monthly newsletter and wondering if Get Oiling has something that will help me achieve this. Felba, one hundred percent, absolutely. Um, that is a core function of what Get Oiling uh has and does. So your newsletter um is actually part of what I talked about on the, on the call here today, uh, that syndication piece. Uh, that's something that's going out to your subscribers who are interested in hearing from you, but who maybe aren't yet your customers. But if you are wanting to put out a, you know, first of the month, here's what's new and how to use your oils, something for your customers, you not only have the ability to create that in Get Oiling, uh, but we have several incredible uh content partners. If you go to the Get Oiling website, uh, and you look for our um, our content uh tab or partners tab, you can actually go in and see all of the different businesses uh who offer done-for-you monthly content. So if you want to release something, but you don't feel really confident in, you know, what to say or what you'll post about, you want to make sure you're featuring the gift with purchase, if that's a priority with you, uh, then there's actually folks who have already made that. And for really affordable prices, uh, you can subscribe to them. And they can give you content that you plug straight into your Get Oiling account and send out to your customers. So definitely recommend checking that out. And then, of course, if you go to your dashboard uh and look for the Success Academy and Get Oiling, look for the Live Training and Replays and type in the word newsletter. You're gonna find videos from calls like this one, where we also talk about how to get that done and share um templates and best practices and things like that with you. All right. I want to head over into the chat just to make sure I haven't missed anything. I know there's, I'm not gonna be able to read through all hundred million something comments in here. So if you have a question that uh, that I haven't answered, if you could please go ahead and put that into the Q and A, so I don't lose it. Um, or I don't miss it, uh, then, then please, please do that. So I, I don't miss it here. Although here, uh, Rocio, I do see a question here from you, and I'm gonna answer that, because I see it at the bottom of the chat. Uh, how do I do oil parties or host a party at customers' homes? Um, or hosting a class through Facebook? So uh, we actually do have trainings like this one on in-person classes and events. Uh, and so that's going to be under uh our playlist in YouTube. Uh, and again, you can find this uh from the uh, the dashboard, uh, going to the Success Academy, going to those live training and replays and typing in events. Uh, and you'll see that there are lots and lots of those uh to choose from, and we absolutely have done a training on uh in-person events with Get Oiling. And virtual events as well, so asking, you know, doing classes through things like Facebook uh or uh, or even using Zoom uh, which we teach on there specifically. So yeah, definitely check out uh those trainings uh on our channel. Uh, Dawn, I see you at the bottom here. On lead magnets, when people fill in the forms, is there an auto tag that can tag them for subscribers only? Uh, yeah. So uh, when you are setting up a landing page or a page in Get Oiling, one of the settings uh that you can choose when the lead opts in uh is to apply a tag to them. And so that tag, if this is, again, if, you know, this is your general funnel for uh, for your lead magnet um, that you're offering, you would put a tag there uh that is indic- indicative of what a subscriber might be in your system, right? Now, if you're using a slightly more advanced strategy that I teach maybe on the Attractwell platform, then there is an alternate way of looking at that, where they're tagged with the name of the lead magnet. And then you have an automation at the end of your nurture campaign that tags them with your general mailing list tag. So that, you know, if you have a longer nurture sequence, they don't need to be getting your um, you know, your more frequent emails that you're sending normally while they're getting that sequence. We don't want to overload them. Uh, so there is an alternate way to do that, but generally speaking, whatever you put as the tag to add to the contact uh is going to be how you filter for those people that you want to um have subscribed to. And you can use multiple tags. So if you want to tag them with general mailing list or newsletter or something like that, just make sure that you're using that across the board, wherever you're having leads opt in on your website. Okay, let's see. Thank you for coming to the Q and A, you guys. Uh, Donna says, now I am setting up a vault. Uh, I, I then need to read you my website, create a blog, et cetera. Can you recommend a specific order to really build effectively? Depends on what the vault is for, Donna. Um, so generally speaking, generally speaking, I would have a um, a very basic website, uh, very, very super general, basic website, uh, and we have templates for that, and we have trainings for that, and they're free, and you can access those and um, and and just follow along with those. I would set up a very general website, and then I would focus on creating content. If your prerogative is, I need more leads, I need to attract more leads and grow my Young Living business, if that's where you're at, uh, then I would focus on the things that uh expand your credibility, authority and presence. And then obviously still create a vault, like if that's for your customers, but have that be something that you're gradually building on the backend. Now, on the flip side, if you are a diamond and your business is overloading you, and you're like, I want to retire, then you might want to switch that order and not worry so much about your presence uh and get, get things in order with your vault, right? So it really kind of depends on your priorities. And absolutely, I bet, uh, you know, diamonds who want to divorce their business, who need a vault first, right? So that you can get everybody taken care of, so that you can then focus on the other things that would work for your growth in the future. But most of us are going to be in the position where it makes more sense to have a simple website and then to um really just soon as you can uh start getting into creating content. Because legacy content is something that we all ought to have been making six months ago, right? Uh, because it really has a snowball effect on your business uh in terms of SEO, right? If that's something, a strategy that you're leveraging, uh, and then, of course, just building up that perception of credibility, authority and trust uh with the people that we are putting ourselves in front of. So that really is the, the more important thing is to e- establish your presence and the things that sort of radiate and echo its authority uh first. Okay, would level one give me access to the newsletter help? I'm not sure what you mean by level one. Um, but if you mean like uh, like our seed plan, then yes, absolutely. You can send newsletters, albeit to a smaller audience, right? You can actually see the different plan levels and what's um, the number of, of contacts you can have. Uh, those are listed there uh with the features. So pick the one that reflects the uh, the number of contacts you expect to uh, to be sending those uh, those emails to in your contact manager. But yeah, absolutely. You can uh send newsletters, create your own or import from others uh with uh every plan level in Get Oiling. Uh, what is your link or where can I sign up and get started? Uh, Felba, you can just go to GetOiling.com, and there's a button to sign up, and then you can pick uh whatever plan you'd like. Seed and Starter, um, you have their set very affordable prices. Uh, but if you wanted to, uh, if your goal is to maybe have a, a greater presence with a, you know, a website and some of these other more advanced features, uh, our uh basic and higher plans are a dollar for your first month. So if you do think that those are things that you want to have in place for your business, that's a really great place to start. You can always change or downgrade or upgrade your account just by sending us a quick email. Okay, Donna says, I'm creating the vault for a digital course launching in January. Well, Donna, if it's launching in January, that's like three days. I guess you better make that vault. I, I would, I would definitely maybe get that vault done. Um, but the, the important thing is to remember that you don't have to have everything all the time. Even if um, you know, you're launching a course in January, um, you don't have to have a homepage on your website. Your homepage on your website can be the page that sells that vault for now, right? If, if your website is, is dawnisbusiness.com, uh, whatever the page is that you are promoting, uh, that can be the page that people go to, and you can obviously change that further down the road. Um, I, I think that it's important for everybody to remember that almost everything that we're doing here has a great degree of flexibility and editability, like you can actually modify this stuff uh in the future. If you don't love it, or you don't feel like it's what your business needs right now, actually really simple to just swap this stuff out. Obviously, you can't change emails that you sent a week ago, but all of the stuff that you publish, right? It's a vault, blog posts, et cetera. Those are malleable, and so you can have those things grow with you. Okay, um, let's see. You're asking about other texting platforms. Okay, yeah. So uh, with that, with Get Oiling, Felba, you actually don't need a separate platform for texting. Uh, you actually have all of that enabled uh right here on your Good Oiling account. There is a, a slight uh additional charge that's uh, that's included there uh to add texting if you want uh them to be able to text you back. Right? You can automatically, just signing up uh for a dollar, seven dollars, fourteen, whatever you sign up with, uh, you can start sending texts right away, and they cost you what's called marketing credits inside of our system. And you have a certain number of those every month based on your plan level, and you could buy more if you want, and they carry over if you don't use them. Uh, but um, but if you want them to be able to reply to you, and then you have a conversation with them back and forth, there is a, a small additional charge for that, uh, but it is fully integrated. So if that person uh also responds to you via email, all of those records are there. You upload your VO file and you want to text that person, all of those records are there and it's unified. So you don't have to have a separate platform for something like texting. Thank you, guys, for all of your fantastic questions. Uh, and uh, we are, again, just so very, very excited uh for the new year, for you, uh, and for you, uh, maybe joining us uh in the new year uh in the Level Up Bootcamp. Make sure you head over there and check it out. Uh, those seats will be open until, I believe, this coming Thursday, so uh next week at uh, at midnight Central Time, those doors close because our kickoff call is next Friday. So again, thank you, guys, for sticking around, for being incredible people and uh, and inspiring us so much to keep doing what we do, because we do it for you. All right, we'll be back uh in the new year. We'll see you then. Take care, everybody. Happy New Year.